All right, we're at the dot hours. On this meeting's. Good work in order. I can answer the question.
For the plan. In the United States of America. And to the Republic for versus stands. Coronation under that. Invisible but never seen in the.
All right, thank you.
Okay, hello.
Hey Ted, you good?
Okay, I'm just on the phone now.
Perfect.
That's fine.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment, this is the time for comment on public matter. Three way trustee on an issue. A little limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone in the public that wish? Jason?
We have three of the four candidates for the board are here tonight. But we have Scott Warnow. Tim Moos and.
Go ahead. Yeah. Thank you. All right, move right on to the building update. First and then for another country.
My back up on my phones.
The chips. Only four slides, I think I can handle that.
Okay.
He's going with.
Okay, so I had a plan before COVID happened and we were working with actually some of our Rankin Leadership Club kids in fourth and fifth grade to talk about all the wonderful things they have been helping with throughout the school year. So we decided to focus on kind of family engagement opportunities and things we've done this year before COVID. And now since we have been doing remote learning, I feel like our teachers have really stepped up to the plate. Administrators, like all the. Staff that I feel like we really have taken on the family engagement piece and how to connect our families has been a really large focus, not just through the school year. Been doing remote learning. So these are just some of the things that we were doing this school year that were fun part of our community and culture. At Rankin, we had a great successful holiday bake sale for PTO, a family fun photo night. Very successful dance, children's kindergarten through fifth grade dance. If you've ever been to one of those, it's quite something. We had a golf tournament in the works, we'll have to postpone that for next year, but that was pretty exciting to look forward to. We have several watchdogs that come on a weekly basis and those are dads of great students that come and volunteer in our school throughout the week and they're there during during the day helping in all of our classrooms. It's great to have those male role models with our kiddos. As you know, if you follow our Facebook and our Instagram pages, we have lots of fun videos and things that we promote. This year for a family night, we have, we had a math escape room night planned. So if you've heard of the escape room where you go and you have to unlock the clues and this was all around math. We do a big fundraiser for PTO original works artwork, of course, PTO meetings. Rankin Elementary was part of our Flathead Parade and Float and so that was a lot of fun. Lots of musicals, meet the teacher day, open house, send out a weekly Raptor report. And then if you've ever looked at our website, our teachers do an amazing job with our tech teachers. Keeping up on their WIC sites and providing opportunities for kids. So this was all things we were in the works, working on as a school prior to remote learning. I feel like everybody has really taken the attitude of whatever it takes. We have weekly PLCs with the teachers remotely, just planning and preparing how we're connecting with families. So these are things that we've kind of shifted or we're doing differently. Teachers are making phone calls, we've done several home visits. Just recently, my counselor and one of my teachers went to a few homes of kids who just weren't connecting remotely with us and played a game on their front lawn, social distancing, playing ladder ball out in the front yard. And it was just a lot of fun for those teachers, but also for the families to continue to be engaged with us. Teachers are using Class Dojo, Google Classroom, doing lots of Zoom meetings or Google meets. Some are meeting weekly, some are meeting daily, some are meeting two to three times a day. It just depends on the needs of that class and those students. We've been engaging with Facebook and Instagram. Lots more parents are reaching out through text messages, asking for individual help. I had a parent reach out to me last night that needed help connecting on their Chromebook and figuring out Google Classroom. And so they FaceTimed me at home and it worked out, it worked out great. We've sent out almost a thousand postcards, handwritten postcards to our families. Since we've done remote learning, so kids are really enjoying getting postcards in the mail. We are planning a parade through some of our neighborhoods, teacher parade on May 7th. So we're looking forward to that. Some of you may have seen pictures of an Easter bunny outing, had two Easter bunnies and the Raptor that went from one end of the valley to the other and made visits to homes through the, they rode on the back of my minivan and we passed out Easter eggs in yards and waves. And so that was a lot of fun for all of us. I've done daily videos and challenges sending to kids, simply just saying, here's my challenge to you today. And like, for example, one was alphabetizing your mom's spice drawer. So just fun things that they could do around the house.
Now it's a little bit of flight.
And a puppet show with math facts. And so kids were making little videos and sending them back, back to me and then I would post them. So that was a lot of fun for, a way for me to engage with the kiddos as well. Some of you may have seen my TikTok video that I did. There's some more of those up and coming. I have a teacher that's been going to front yards and reading to kids in the front yard where the kid is sitting, you know, across the yard from them and just reading out loud to the student because they're not able to connect with us remotely for whatever reason. I have paras going in and helping with food every day. We're, Rankin is serving the most amount of meals on a daily basis. We serve approximately 250 breakfasts a month daily. So that is a lot. And so we've been having one to two paras every day come in and help with that. Several families that aren't able to still pick up packets and so we've been, paras will deliver packets to the front porch. Our specialists, if you have time to check out our specialists on our website, they have a fun exit activity and been doing shout outs with our Raptor. We've been doing virtual PLCs, virtual field trips. Our tech teachers have been pushing out and our coaches have been pushing out amazing staff trainings on different tools that teachers can use. Our, our coach has done lots of video math games and we're pushing those out to parents so they can learn how to play the game at home. Our aspire therapists and our CSCT therapists are successfully doing teletherapy with about 20 kids total at Rankin during, during this time. And then if you follow Facebook, our Rory Raptor videos are a lot of fun to, to watch to see what the Raptor is up to. So I have a teacher that's very creative and she likes to storyboard her own videos and when she gets me to come in and videotape her. She's even engaged in a few. It's a lot of fun. So I really feel like our staff has stepped up and has the attitude of whatever it takes. This was just one way that we're keeping track on a weekly basis. This is a snapshot of a fifth grade class. Teachers go through every week and they're just marking down how they're connecting with those kiddos on a weekly basis. And then I send them a new sheet every week and as you can see, all the teachers are across the bottom, they click on their tab. And then it's a communication tool for myself and for my counselor to go look at, okay, which kiddo is not responding back? Which kiddo is not, parents aren't responding back. And we make our little notes of what we did during the week and then it starts over. So it's just a nice way weekly of not necessarily who's completing the work, but who's engaging with the teachers either remotely, email, text, phone call, how they touched base. And across the top, those are just all the different ways that teachers are communicating with, with families. And then to finish off, these are just some fun, I put together a fun video that highlights Rankin for the 2020 school years, lots of fun pictures and things. So go ahead and play the video.
You got it.
If not, it's on our website too. Just to reemphasize, our teachers are doing and our staff is doing an amazing job. We're not just teaching remotely right now, we're being social workers, we're being counselors and we're doing whatever it takes for our families at KPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa, a couple of questions?
Oh, yes.
How do you think families are doing? I mean, I've heard a lot of parents being overwhelmed.
Yeah, I think they are, I think there's a lot of families overwhelmed, especially I hear from ones that have, you know, three, four, five kids in the schedule and we just keep saying, you know, do what you can, do what you can. We've checked out lots of Chromebooks and, you know, problem solve different things. But I think the biggest, I keep, we keep, I keep telling all my teachers, just, just keep connected with them, that's the most important thing. Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna tell you, I saw one of your teachers who did reach out that way just on Facebook saying, what are your problems? Let me know how the remote learning is going. It was great to see her respond to every single question and that was neat, that was first that I could do.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was great too.
Marissa, you know, I'm really interested in the Inspire program. And I'm curious about the kids who have counseling, who may have speech therapy, occupational therapy, who just have those different services that they need to be successful. What's your take? How does that go in providing those kinds of services?
You know, it's going better than I had anticipated. So all of the kids who were seeing Jen Metcalf through the Inner Mountain Program for Inspire, they're all, most all of them are engaged through teletherapy. So she's doing, you know, the individual therapy sessions as well as family therapy through remotely. And that's going well, you know, we get lots of showing around the house and things like that. Both my special ed teachers are the special ed teacher and the Inspire teachers are doing morning meetings. Every morning, just like the regular classrooms. They also send out a weekly signup genius for the families to sign up, like for Brooke and Resource, she's, she sends that out weekly and the parents can sign up. And so kids can jump on an individual or small groups and she helps them work through the math problems with them. And the same with Jennifer Tetter, I know she does two to three video one-on-one conferences with most of those. It's a lot of showing us around their house and, you know, their dog, their cat, you know, all of those. But it's mainly just keeping them engaged and keeping connected with them, not so much about the work. But they're also, and then our paras are delivering packets to those homes, to those homes. Janice doing packets, I know, it seems like weekly, she's in there and then the paras usually deliver most of those to the homes as well. Go ahead, do your best.
Marissa, Ted, April, do you have a question?
No, thank you.
Amy, are you joining this meeting? Not yet. Any other question? Thank you.
Breaks up a lot.
Say that again, Ted.
When people are talking other than yourself, it breaks up a lot on my phone.
Okay, we will work to speak up as much as possible.
Okay.
And I, I, I'm watching it through. I'm watching it through the web app and it's easier to hear through the web app than my phone.
Ellen?
I would be your guest by Tuesday. I want to acknowledge Marissa publicly for her family attitude. Marissa's been an administrator that we frequently go to with real tough situations. And she always, without exception, steps up and says, I got it. We'll get this figured out and she's always happy about it. I just, it's an amazing trait that she has. So I want to thank you and acknowledge that publicly, Marissa.
Thank you. Business, approval of custodial union MOA.
So this was one of the union MOAs that we're not ready at our last meeting. You'll see that this language is very similar, if not identical in most ways. It does have a few changes in regards to their specific work. But again, this starting language, it has the same, as we explained in finance, the same lead of benefit at the other employee groups. And we'd be happy to answer questions. Is Tracy on the web?
I am, yeah.
Okay, you're, you're there. Okay, so Tracy's on board to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer. But we would recommend for approval of this MOA.
Are there any questions for the administration?
Yes, but not pertaining to that. We can't see anything like Mark bringing one away on the Google meet. And that's not a big deal because I can follow along on my phone, but in case somebody else cares.
Okay, Mark's working on it.
Thank you.
Do I entertain a motion to approve the MOA?
I move that we approve the custodial unions MOA.
Ted, say, Marissa? So I'll say, we won't do a roll call this time, but we'll ask the trustees on, on the phone separately. And then you can just do it, okay? Together. So trustees, Jim present here, all in favor for a sound. Oh, I'm sorry. Further discussion? Thanks, Ted. Thanks, keep me straight. Also, should we be allowing any public comment on this before deliberation?
Thanks for the reminder.
Public comments. Jason, is there anyone?
Nope.
All right, deliberation, further discussion?
Okay, for me, we need to be approving this one and the next one. And I could use the word reluctantly only because we've already approved something for 80%. We have a personnel, so we'll prepare to approve something for the other 20%. The need for, I think, has been, to varying degrees demonstrated that in both cases, what we've approved before and what we're gonna prove now and the next item is not really necessary and everything could have satisfied with FF CRA. Just like it's been satisfied with many other local public entities, whether it's the city council or White County, as well as all of the private businesses that have had to lay off people for important hours. So to me, I struggle with, with the benefits that were created with the other two, this one and the next one. Even though I'm gonna vote in favor of this only because it's fair to treat everybody the same. But there is an added cost to the district as a result of doing all this. And, and there's certain acknowledgements that exist in it that are applied that may not be real obvious to everybody and those are the things that first one struggled with. I think it's unfortunate that we had to go this route because still in my mind doesn't make sense that we need to go this route for many of these.
Ted? Further comments by trustees? So student in a motion, Ted to a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, those online? In favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries an animal slide.
Lamb, I've also been asked by the board to provide data regarding the people that are on FF CRA. Would you like to do that now?
Yes, Tracy.
The next, next one, the agenda item.
Oh, it's not with the business, I can't see any agenda, I'm sorry.
So new business personnel action items, new hires, resignations, retirements, termination, change of contracts or divorce.
So again, this is the standard personnel asking for approval of our hires and resignations, termination and so forth. And then included is that is the COVID leave and leave carryover. This is a recommendation that all other employee groups receive the same leave benefit as what the board has previously approved. And then we have substitute renewal. And as well as the sub list, so we can take each of those separately. Or you can certainly approve them all together. And then Tracy was going to provide an update of the leave status and we'll do that as a standard operating procedure for the board at all of our. That's fine, person. So let's start off with the hiring information.
I move to the hiring of the people listening. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those. Those remotely?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries an animal slide. Okay, the leave here.
This is the recommendation to approve other non-represented groups as well as one other representative group, which is our custodian, excuse me, our maintenance and grounds group. And then all other non-represented group have the same leave that other.
Are there public comment?
Speak up. You have to speak up when you guys are talking.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Uh, yes. Hold on. Let Jack go ahead and make his comment, then we'll come back.
Likewise in this, because I see it's puzzling in my mind that we have a CBA unit that doesn't see that. Apparently it's not necessary to have a separate MOA with. But they're working their regular hours with no changes in work conditions, but I'm not puzzling that they're being treated so much differently, even though they're being included in this particular action here. And that, that's just part of the inconsistencies that I've seen in this whole process that I'm just struggling in the very beginning. Even though all who support in this, it's with a lot of apprehension because it's a direction that I don't believe we need to go and begin with. Again, that people are not using the leaves that we've approved and they're doing it under FF CRA, then we didn't need to do anything.
Any other comment?
So I've explained this to Jack when we've chatted and that is that the maintenance and grounds have not had any change in work conditions. They've come to work at their normal time, they leave work at their normal time, they take care of their business. And really the only impact was the leave issue. So that's why we did not have to go the route of a separate MOA with that.
All right, there was someone remotely that wants, thank you, comment.
Amy.
Amy?
I would say, I would say, I do feel go to favor this for quality and consistency. But I guess that's troubled by the financial impact being so minimal. And it seems that there could be a real concrete organizational impact given to us. I just, as a board member, would like to be more informed. I know that, you know, in the presentation coming up, we'll see that the impact of for next year is going to be 110 to 180,000. That information was not presented to me, I think very clearly, or maybe I just was confused, there was a lot going on on me. Anyway, I just broke up the word minimal instead of just, I guess, that is the number.
Thank you, Amy. Any other comments?
I can address the financial impact being minimal because most of these people were absent, would not have substitute. So in the cases of some of the previous MOAs, people are after the limited use carryover. They will need substitutes to replace them when they leave them. And most of these people, that would not be the case.
Thank you.
That's why the financial impact is minimal.
Amy, did you catch that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question as well. I'm also going to be voting in favor and I, I just wanted to understand the reason for doing this is so that every single group has the same
The same, same leave.
Consideration. Yep. All right.
So all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those remotely, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries an animal slide. Substitute renewal and the sub list. I move approval of the substitute renewal and the list and we'll talk about the last moving sub. I'll be excited. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those remotely, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries an animal slide. Non-renewal, one year?
This is, again, this is a routine this time of year, these were our. These were our non-renewals of certified staff limited to duration of their contracts, so typically one-year contracts, and we have a list for certified, and then we also have another list for classified. And again, even if we open these positions up and available for the following year, these folks certainly are are more than able to invite you to apply, but we would have to, because of the length of the duration, take this out.
Non-renewal, approval for non-renewal certified staff limited to duration of contracts.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those joining remotely, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed remotely? Motion carries on the other side. Non-renewal, one year, classified.
Again, a little shorter list, but the same reasoning.
So.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Remotely, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed remotely? Motion carries on the other side. Thank you. New emergency declaration.
Before we go on, I'm going to carry the information of active number of employees.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Thanks for discussion. Tracy?
Thank you. So, we have a total of twenty-seven employees who have accessed me under FFCRA. Four of those employees have returned to work. And so, if you take the percentage of that, twenty-seven employees, which Amy just might help to people who are looking at our costs, that's about three point six percent of our total staff. And then since the MOAs have been approved, we've only had two people request leave under that, and that's point zero zero two percent. So, that is the that is the young age, so it hasn't changed since their last resumé.
Tracy, have any of those employees gone over eighty hours?
I will have to look at that, I haven't done that.
I would appreciate it if I could be targeted with this. Because the whole issue in my mind, and perhaps in other trustees' minds, is that we're granting more than work of the I'm just curious to know if anybody's taking.
We will have people that are going over eighty hours, depending on where, how far we think it's going to be.
Okay, well, I don't want to slow down the meeting while you go dig up that piece of data in the future, but you can not only tell us the total, and I don't want to just hear the current total, I want to hear the totals since the year before. I'd like to know how many, how many more, eighty hours. I don't know how much extra we're giving more than the total of all of them.
I'm more than happy to move it up, and I did give the number of twenty-seven total. Since we have this FFCRA was put into place, four people have come back. Since the MOAs, we've had two people. So, I would provide you with the different information, but this will be a basically you originally requested.
I'm happy for now, and if we could just include that in the kitchen meetings, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Tracy.
Oh, and and this is Erkman, if I could ask this question kind of related? Have any of the people who have needed to maintain the have like how what percentage of the have you needed to have substitute for? Or has has that all been able to be covered by the people at this point?
We have not had any substitute for for FFCRA. So, since the full term, we haven't had any, but.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next item is the new emergency declaration.
So, with the governor's announcement of schools being able to reopen, or consideration of such, on May seventh, this emergency declaration is needed to continue to ensure state funding for Kalispell, as well as other districts, including transportation for the remainder of the year. Again, I would recommend that the board approve this declaration of unforeseen emergency. Exact motion is listed there, I think if we simply referred to as presented, we could.
Are there any public comments? Anybody to approve?
I move that the Board of Trustees declare an unforeseen emergency as presented.
Second? All right, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those remotely?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries on the other side. Contracts and change orders on the high school.
So, we have a Blackhead High School blinds, Western sports floors, and here here change order on the high school side. Again, I'll list those out just for those that maybe can't see it typed up. Would be, these, again, were vetted, as we always do at finance, and would recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions, but any again.
I move approval of the three changers for the high high school district, the blinds, the floors, and here here.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those remotely, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the other side. Thank you. Contracts. Mark, is this on the elementary side?
Yeah, this is on the elementary side. Although the when on the directive for Morrison and Merrily, I realize that that's for a transportation, you know, evaluating elementary property. Shouldn't that be?
It looks like it's everybody, and I'm going to get that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so so we'll take, we'll take it, I would recommend we take action on on the first one. And let me explain that finance when explained very thoroughly that we are in a situation where the city has tentatively engaged with us just informally about the need for use of of their facility, where our current bus garage and where we park our buses. So, this directive is to explore both our properties south of Rankin and our elementary site north of town off of Rose Park. Potential for a location for our restaurant. It's really a matter of, can we fit it into one of those campuses? One of the options that we have looked at at the north site is if we needed a couple more acres, we could go to the developer and 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 request that and see what cost that would be. So, again, this is just a directive to allow Morrison and Merrily to do that work for us and and really answer the question to know what we're up against.
Mark, all those contracts would be everybody except for the number thirty-one.
Oh, okay, yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Maybe we must take a look at the principal reassignment and do that first, about everybody.
So, this is elementary, this was the change in year six at Delrod. This simply allows Jeff Hornby, who is currently assistant principal, he's being reassigned as we've shared with you and discussed at finance, to the principal position. And this is just a minor adjustment of eighteen hundred dollars in his difference in salary currently to what the principal salary would be for the balance sheet. This will be an elementary action.
Any questions for administration?
I I have a question. So, if we are increasing the salary, which I totally agree with, are we not paying the salary for
We are. Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you guys can hear me, everything is blank.
You can't hear, say go.
Oh, you came back, thanks, sorry. It started to talk and then it was completely gone.
We're back.
So, so again, this would be a overall net increase of eighteen hundred dollars.
Any other questions? Elementary trustees, are there any motion?
No move.
Further discussion? Elementary district only, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those remotely?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries on the other side. Thank you.
So, then a motion certainly could be entertained for the remainder, which all trustees could vote on.
Yes. So, I saw it ran around a one-year contract, we kind of is that where it landed, and we discussed.
Yes. Well, we talked about the the fact that a one-year would give us the greatest amount of flexibility at finance, and so thus the reasoning, or it's an additional amount, but it's pretty minimal, right? I want to say. Yes, that's a student.
We went on to over the three or five years renewal of the six thousand dollars. This is one year and seventy-five hundred dollars. But if we were to look at the first class, that's twenty-eight thousand, and TSP's eighteen thousand. Bright Arrow's seventy-five hundred, Power School, or
One.
School Point, I didn't get that place, we collect this sixteen thousand dollars. So, we're not looking at these light ones spent a lifetime and doing them at finance, so we're not, if it's maybe a surprise to some, that sounds like we're just rubber stamping it, but it's not, because that group.
Further discussion is up to this point. Jack.
You know, and I'll just take a comment, Jack, that I know I'm a door to the finance. You know, I'm not officially a member of that, because I learned so much. And, yeah, these things are not just rubber stamping. I really appreciate you, you know, vetting them in these committee meetings and you know, the disagreements, I think that those are good discussions.
Trustee candidates, the finance committee is where you want to be.
You're learning curve.
See, when you go down, make a motion.
Oh, of course. Let's see, what am I, I'm, I made them.
Twenty-four, five, and six.
Yeah. That's my motion. Did you get that? I got it.
Twenty-four, thirteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
I want to, I want to Okay, the twenty-eight thousand dollars we're going to spend, no, no, I just want to.
Yes, I would just be, Mark, just to remind him, perhaps to show the numbers. Just in general about this need and any sense of timeline you might have, and any comment you care to make about how your interfacing might have as part of the transition.
So, MICA has been included in literally everything we are doing from this point on, including conversations on this particular topic, but the city certainly did not want to pull the rug out from underneath us, and so engaged early about their intent. I would say three to four years down the road, maybe a bit sooner, but certainly that's the general timeline that they have discussed. And again, allows us to do the proper amount of planning to a point where, when they need that that facility, which is there. And we then have a plan in place to transition to a new site for our our bus garage and and areas to park the bus. So, again, it would be some type of facility. We think that we have the capability, if we, by starting now, to possible fund that depending on the cost of the facility. And we hope that we can do it without having to purchase property, but that may not be the reality. But but this study will tell us exactly what we need to know, estimated costs of it.
Thank you for sharing.
Make that motion now? Did we get there?
She made the motion.
She did, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I answered.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Further discussion?
Can I just ask that, I was trying to ask that. Well, do you also get like some lines or plans? I'm just wondering, I'm sure you all, I'm a bit, you know, just versing a finance recommendation, but I'm just wondering about approving this. How do we do it, you know, after maybe the all the final budget, knowing that this is something that's super imminent, even though we have to do it? I'm just wondering what your thoughts were about that, with all the budget needs that we're facing, you know, here and versus doing this one right now.
Well, we talked, again, as we've already mentioned, the fact that we discussed this at finance, finance recommending to move it forward. And I would say that if there was any concern in regards to financing this and paying for this contract, this, I'll say, work project directive, we the finance would not have felt comfortable with that. So, I, we're comfortable in having the funds. And again, this is, this is not necessarily, this is not a general fund hit. And it's our general fund that typically is is most strained. So, there is, again, additional budgets within transportation to pay for this. And I'll just remind you, we're very, we're very careful of permissible, I mean, the transportation is a permissible, meaning that when needs arrive and we can legally and appropriately justify them, the board and administration have the ability to leverage additional tax dollars to pay the bills.
Okay.
Amy, this is Jack. So, yeah, we had interesting conversations with finance, and I had conversations that, I think, we were talking about how we need to save money on one hand and then spend money on the other hand, and I let Jack in the book like that, but looking at, because there's I'm just going to use a broad number here, ten or twelve different funding accounts that all have different accounting purposes, that there's bunches of dollars available for each one, doing various things that need to be passed, even though there'll be a lot of irony in the process. What the hell are you spending money for, we're talking about budget cuts on the other side of the map. So, I don't know how to answer that one, other than saying that there's numerous saving accounts or budgets or funding accounts that we still have to continue operating in different parts of the district in order to continue on despite the fact that we have to address other aspects of the district and get very different focuses and conversations. So, keeping with what Jack said, I don't know how to answer either, but the way I attempt to answer it is all soft, because if I know, we're going to have to do something. And I need to know how much it's going to cost us, and finding out what it's going to cost us has its own cost. And I believe we have to look at that face by face, but if the case is not before us, probably the cost of finding out, what it's going to cost is really difficult. Well, we're not finished spending money for the next three years. So, yeah, there's a lot of irony there.
So, Amy, this is master plan for the need for a transportation. So, and so rather than be put in a position where we need to go out for a long period of our plan is to over the next three to four years levy a little bit this year in transportation time, and and then when needed, we'll be prepared to build it. So, that is why we're bringing it forward now, because we know we'll be here for three, four years, we want to start a plan to set aside the funding every year, so when we So when we get there, we learn about most of what we, you know, are in a position where we have to sell off. That's why we need it, basically, quite a ways ahead of what we actually need.
All right, so I think, so I'll try to.
Thank you, Mary. Further discussion? All the different things, aye?
Aye.
Those remotely, the favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Those remotely? Motion carries on. Purchased over ten thousand dollars.
So again, we have an agreement with trustees that he purchases over ten thousand, our vetted, reviewed, and approved. We had an update from IT on the need for a new power school server. Mark Dennehy presented the need for the cost of Wilshire High School for Walter to present. Michelle at Flathead presented the, what I think will be probably the final payment for the Flathead High School brand yet. Again, would recommend approval of those. We're certainly able to answer you for your question.
We need approval of all of this, if we can get that.
Definitely.
Further discussion? All the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those remotely, favor?
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries on. Thank you. Greg, do your second.
Nine hundred, you guys.
Yeah, you can just. I'm going to sign off right now, and you can then, I'll, I'll.
Here.
Into your table?
Yeah.
Because I have like five hours.
Thanks, Sarah.
So I think for that, because we find that's being pretty close. Um, this is a case where it seems like this whole, this whole concept, you find that, that's true, that I have there.
So keep in mind that some link that Jeff sent out has the entire packet with all of the attachments as well. Do you have access to your Chromebook or computer?
I have to, yeah, I know.
Yeah. I'm typing into the bird, which is that N dot, N dot seven dot five five. Is the KPS registered right here?
Welcome to my life. Type one, the negative three leading.
Hit one, Mark. Hit one, hit one.
Okay, so first, tonight is health insurance financial through the end of March. And our cash position is a negative nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Thank you. Perfect, thanks, Jack. Jack's suggesting the lighting, for those of you who are in the room. So, um, so our cash position is in the negative. We're hoping to see, um, well, not hoping to see, but we're thinking we will see that over the next few months, our claims will decline, mostly because people aren't able to get in to see the doctor. And so we're hoping that by year end, we'll be in a little better position than we are right now. So the combined reports across medical, dental, that was it right there, flex, the care here at clinic, and so on. Trying to find my, okay. Oh, I think, this is, yeah. Where's that rum? It's rum sanitizer that we're looking for. We're gonna clean the mouth with mine, we are going over the edge here. The number I was looking for was on this, was up there, I can just scroll over far enough. So this is our position for this current year. So we're looking at a shortfall of right at six hundred thousand dollars. So what's the difference between the six hundred thousand and the million dollar cash shortfall is the last three years of cumulative shortfall that now has us at a million dollars. And so what I would say about this is we have created a group of people to take a look at the health insurance issue. We have to solve it. We can't keep just looking at this million dollar shortfall month after month. So we have, we have a four-pronged approach. One is that based on our health insurance consultant's recommendations, next year's premiums look like we'll create a million dollar shortfall. We have a million dollar shortfall right now that has been created over the last three years. We have a seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar loan from the inter-local agreement to the health insurance plan. And then the fourth prong is that we need to put in motion a process so that we don't fall back into this arrears. So we're taking a look at that, we're modeling a five-year plan to make that work. We're gonna be working with our employees, and our approach is going to be meet in the middle. So the district is going to be asked to contribute some money to that two-point-five million dollar problem, and we're going to be asking employees to meet us halfway. So we're just formulating that right now. We have three board members on that committee, and we've asked them to reach out to the remainder of you and bring you up to date on what it is that we're talking about doing, so that when we get to the end of this with a solution, you'll feel like you're fully aware of what we're asking you to do. And so that's gonna happen over the next two to three weeks. So you'll be hearing from Jack, Ursula, and Diane on kind of what the plans are for addressing this ongoing issue. So, and I think we do have some good ideas. So we'll be, you'll be hearing.
Right now, we're not ready to share anything, because we really don't have anything to share yet. We're still developing it, so you haven't heard from us yet, because we don't have anything to share yet. We're still in a data accumulation phase.
Right. So, but we know, we've identified the problem, so that's a good place to start, right? Okay. And so I just wanted to share a little bit of enrollment data, and that goes back to nineteen ninety-four. And so on the screen, in that graph, the red line is, represents a one percent growth. And then the blue line that falls above and below it there is the K, is our enrollment K-12. So we're on a pretty steady one percent growth. And then down below, this top line is the enrollment growth since nineteen ninety-four for the nine through twelve grades, and then K-two-five and six through eight. And so in our quest to begin to budget four to five years out, we need some enrollment data. And it's not that easy to come by, because some people use their birth rates at the local hospital. But we know that many of the children born at Kalispell Regional don't ever attend Kalispell schools. So that's not an easy thing to do. And we have partner school districts that send their students to us, some in the sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then of course, in the ninth grade. So we need to put all of that data together and try to get a five to ten-year look at what our enrollment looks like. And it's going to go hand in hand with that facility planning that we approved earlier. So having enrollment data, so, you know, when do we need the next elementary school? When are we going to need the next middle school? So we're, we're gonna be working with some statisticians at Flathead Valley Community College to take a look at a five and ten-year growth pattern in this enrollment. So you'll be seeing more about enrollment as well. And we're hoping that that'll put us in a position to plan ahead for some of the issues that we might have, or challenges we might have ahead of us. Yes, Jack?
To me, on that graph there, you have to realize that there's gonna be cycles. And that just because you might look at years two thousand and five to two thousand and twelve where it went up, it's not something that continues up, it flattens out. And that if we take the wrong, if we use the wrong part of a cycle for planning, then we're gonna be hurting ourselves in one direction or the other. So we have to recognize that there may be spurts, but there's also flat parts as well as declines, and we have to be able to plan accordingly, even though in any one year, it may feel like we did really poor planning.
Okay, good point. Then we'll see how that future planning pans out. But in this data, you actually have the detailed enrollment information for each of those years back to nineteen ninety-four, if you're interested in seeing, well, where were the highs and where were the lows with the graph to kind of guide you, so. And Mike asked last time we met, or maybe it was at finance, asked about the timeline for budget planning. And of course, we actually start developing our budget in October, right after our first count. And so there are many pieces to this timeline. And we're quite a ways through this, we're into the April pieces. And Mike was very interested in how the work on the health insurance challenge was going to fold into the big picture budget, because they all have to come together eventually. So we started our work on the health insurance challenge here, board meeting tonight. And then as you see, we just go on through with finance board meetings. We need to be ready to start open enrollment for the health insurance sometime between May fifteenth and June first. So that's why you see these question marks and says open enrollment twice. We know that June first is kind of our, you know, hard deadline for that. And then, of course, open enrollment ending depends on when we actually get it started. So we do have taken a look at, okay, what are our parameters? And what do we need to get done in order to fold this into our budget planning? And so our final budget isn't actually adopted until August, but in June, we hope to have some pretty significant preliminary budget discussion.
So could you go back to open enrollment opens? By the time, by June first, are we going to have any kind of a number about the premium the employees would be paying in the new open enrollment?
Yes, we actually have.
That's a target date for coming up with what the new premium will be, so employees can make their choice, is that correct?
Right. And we have two models right now that we're starting to share with the health insurance committee and administration. And we're just, now we just need to do some work on fine tuning that, Mike, and figuring out how to take care of the two-point-five million dollar shortfall.
That's great, that's exactly what I wanted to know, and thank you, Glenn.
Yep.
May fifteenth is a hard date, June first is definitely a hard date for open enrollment. And we'd like to be closer to May fifteenth than June first. So you don't want to hold us hard and fast to May fifteenth and maybe May twentieth for coming to a resolution, but yes, there'll be a lot going on in the next.
But in that time period, just restating what you just said, somewhere in that time period, we have to make up our minds about what we're gonna ask for the new premium.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Yes. So we do have it folded in, and then Bromley did provide, and I added it to the packet, a little bit more information, if you read through that, about why we accept the timelines that we have. There was some discussion about, you know, could we change it to a September enrollment? And we've been over all of that, and then this is kind of the recommendation that we came up with. And then we folded it into the overall budget planning. So a lot of conversation has taken place in gathering of additional information in order to put together what we think is the ideal timeline.
One other question, Glenn. This whole package, including premiums, is that, is that a board action?
Yes, the committee will recommend to the boards, but it requires board action.
So it's a package that the board has to approve?
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so in looking at big picture budget projections, you've seen this document before, and we start this document in October, and then as numbers begin to firm up, we, you know, we bring in the actual numbers, we start with estimates, and usually this has a couple more years on it. I just, okay, so I changed. What's my? Help me, Jason.
He's shaking his head, no.
He's playing solitaire. Where does my air come? Just look in the window. Okay, thank you. I just immediately panicked. Okay, so one of, and also I'll just hit the changes that have happened to this document since the last time you saw it. And the big E is right here, this three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I came to you a couple of board meetings ago and talked to you about the potential high school enrollment increase and our thoughts about going forward and asking for an anticipated enrollment increase before the fact, rather than doing it after the fact. And so it was a hundred and twenty-three potential students, which would garner three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which goes a long way toward helping to balance the high school budget. But there are some risks. If the children don't arrive, then we will just have to be cautious not to spend the money, because we're not eventually going to get the money, right? Actually, we're going to end up paying it back. And so, and particularly right now in the times that we're in, it is a little concerning, because will we be counting students on October first? You know, will parents feel comfortable sending their children back to school in the fall? So we are, I just want you to know that this is a little bit risky, but we can, you know, we can, we'll be prepared to, because you'll see that, you know, we, some of the money is tied up in FTE to teach those additional students, but some of it is not, and we will be prepared to react if that does not materialize. So there are, these are the increase in state dollars, which we've looked at numerous times, not a lot of money there. Not a lot of money there. That's our increase is $430,000. That's the sum total of our increase in state dollars for next year. I, you know, estimated retirement savings projections. And then a goodly portion of our budget is salaries and benefits. And so that's what we're looking at here. Many of these groups already have a collective bargaining agreement in place, and we know what the salary increases will be for next year. They also all have steps built into them, and so we know what those steps will cost. We have three groups that we have not completed. We haven't had conversations with them about what their cost of living increase will look like for next year. So I have placeholders here. A 1% placeholder for central administration, a 1% for principals, a 1% for non-unions. And of course, if we settle at 2%, you can multiply that times 2, or 3%, you can multiply that times 3. But we have a placeholder here. We started some initial conversations with those three groups. And we will, before this budget is finalized, we will be bringing before you a recommendation for what to do with those groups. They will very much be in line with what has been done with other groups here. So those are probably low estimates right now. They're, none of them are large groups and not, you know, we're not talking huge sums of money. Totaled 30,000, right? So then we have a few wants and needs, and we have pared these down. So all of these items here had dollar amounts applied to them. And then we went through and said, you know, we need the internet service on the high school side. We've been funding that. We funded that the last two years out of the in-local agreement. We need to fund that. We need some additional FTE at the high school level to teach those 123 additional students that we're looking for. So remember, the revenue is $325,000. The expenditures for the teachers is 123. So the difference between the two is what I'm talking about. If the students don't materialize, we'll need to figure out how to address that. So we've agreed that there, that we would not be hiring another FTE elementary counselor. We do, for two years now, we have not budgeted for any maintenance grounds or custodial equipment, and we need to be realistic about that. If we fall too far behind, then the costs will rise quickly. Middle school needs 1.6 FTE to address their additional 6th graders. And what we did there was we're taking one FTE from the K-5 group to the middle school, and then the middle school is going to figure out how to take care of the other 0.6. So we just budgeted, or actually, we didn't budget for any additional FTE. We're going to shift some FTE, and then we're going to figure out how to make it work. We still have a 0.5 counselor for LEC on this. They have a 0.5 counselor right now, and they would like to have a full-time counselor. We budgeted for that. All of this information has to do with curriculum. We have some high curriculum needs coming up. Remember, we had a five-year plan and what that looked like. Last year, Kelly carried over some of her money. And so then we have a curriculum need, the remainder of the curriculum need there. And then we thought we could split it over the next two years. So if we buy at the end of the fiscal year, we can kind of shift and pay for half of it out of one fiscal year and half of it out of the other. And Kelly, do you want to speak to this need? Or are we not, that curriculum need? Or are we not ready to talk about that?
Well, the OPI has on a five-year cycle. And each one of those cycles comes with a price pay. And the first cycle, one of the critical areas is social studies. And that curriculum review, I'm taking it as a three-star financial impact, that will be the biggest financial impact. So what we're doing is, there's not going to be a year where we can just take a hit on one of those cycles and all of a sudden magically have money. So off of being there. So we're being very conservative with that curriculum budget and leaving the leftovers in the interlocal, so that we have some money set aside, thinking long-term about these cycles. And that's what we're doing. OPI is a little bit off on their timing on that cycle one, and it may help us to possibly delay the purchasing of the materials until the next 40 years. But I don't, I can't say that for absolute stat tonight, we're monitoring that timeline. And once, to find the materials actually comes at the end of a pretty lengthy process. And if we have the COVID thing going on, we're not going to have a process anyway. So some of it is also in the hands of the budget. So I'll keep you posted, especially as I create a board committee, I'll keep you posted of any changes that might be made from our original map.
And so these are coming down the pipe. They might just be a little later in the process, but we need to be careful about our planning. And we may have some year-end money in curriculum, again, that we will place in the interlocal and just beef up what's in there already and be prepared for these curriculum purchases. And then we needed to add software for our digital doors. The departments, so like the maintenance department, the business office, the superintendent's office, the technology department, what we've asked them to do in their budgets is to operate with the same amount of money. So even though they might do different things with the money, we basically said there's not going to be increases to department budgets. And the technology, we have really pushed them to the maximum. They've had to really work hard at living within the budget that they've had with our requests for additional software and such. And I think it's time that we at least take care of, you know, this piece. Not a lot of money, but it does help when they're already maxed out on their budget. So. Then we, I don't have an amount in here for the health insurance, but we know we've got some needs there. Those needs are probably going to be met with one-time money and not general funds or other funds monies. We did recently go out for new property liability insurance, and we got a decent bid that increased our property liability by $49,000. We had another bid that increased it by $175,000. So that was an awesome save there by going out to bid. And we know that we're going to have some increased utility costs. And I know the water and sewer, that's still, this is based on their early information, but I think they're still, the city's still having conversations about whether or not they're actually going to institute those.
They are, yeah.
Yeah. So we might see that change, but those are from early on, and we need to be prepared for some kind of an increase. We know that there is going to be some savings as our tutors move more toward the paraprofessional wage rates, and that's the prediction for the savings in this next year. Remember now, we're doing a two-step process. We're moving toward the classified salary schedule halfway next year and the other half of the way the following year. So we'll see some savings similar to this over the next couple of years. And then this is just a recap of all the numbers that you've seen above. And what we ended up here with is a $450,000 shortfall on the elementary side and $234,000 on the high school side. And these items below the line were some things that were discussed and brought up, and we've decided to, that we couldn't fund those. And so they're still there, but they fall below, you know, our need. And in earlier conversations, the board has approved funding these shortfalls out of the interlocal agreement. And actually, these are fairly small amounts, and oftentimes, we have that remaining in our budget at year-end. So we may not even tap into the interlocal agreement, but we want to have the authority to do so if we need to. Because we do know we have some challenges coming out of the coronavirus process, and so.
Gwen, can I just quick comment? So just, this is, from my perspective, good news, because if you recall, the last time we provided a formal budget review, that 450 and 254 totaled nearly $1.4 million. And that, if you recall, we were actually asking that $1.4 million to be covered by the interlocal agreement. And we know that there will be money that will go back into the interlocal agreement at the end of the year. That's still a question mark. But the good news is, again, this worksheet that Gwen works on, as soon as things go from assumptions to fact, they're updated. And so the updates certainly have led to a much better budget picture from a long-term standpoint and shortfall standpoint. So just wanted to point that out.
Yes, Mike?
In the projected budget balances, I see some numbers in column B. What do they mean?
So the administrative budget team got together and reviewed all of these requests, these needs and wants. And we were each allowed to place a vote on what we thought was the highest priority. And that's why you see these with the highest numbers.
Okay, those are priorities.
Yes, yes.
Well, then let me ask one other question. On that activities, travel and motel, what, 10,000, is that, am I seeing that right?
Right.
How many trips is that? How many out-of-district professional development conferences does that rep 10,000?
So again, that number there does not coincide with professional development. That number there is activities.
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry.
So again, we knew that in some cases, particularly because our drivers no longer can drive through the night, and so we have additional motel stays for our teams.
I got it. I see your point. But is there a line item in there for that type of, you know, out-of-district conferences and all that kind of thing, Kelly?
Our professional development is earmarked in the Title II budget. And the all-conference fees, travel, motel, you know, whatever, anything to do with professional development is coming out of title.
So that's coming out of federal money?
It's coming out of federal-
Yes.
Thank you.
Not impacting general funds.
No, it's not, not just at all. Thank you.
And so one, oh, go ahead, Susan.
I just want to back up a little bit. When you talk about the counts in October, this is something I hadn't really thought about, that counts coming in October. Is that the only count?
October and February.
Okay.
Yep. You do two counts. Average them together.
Yes.
Yep. So good point there, Mike, in regard to the federal dollars. What we have been told is that whatever we don't spend in our federal dollars can carry over to next year. In the, in the normal times, there's a limit to what you can carry over. You need to spend it based on what you said you were going to spend it on, and then you're limited to what you can carry over. But we've been notified that that's been waived, and anything that we don't spend can be carried over. So we had numerous professional development opportunities planned for spring and summer, and many of those probably will not happen. But the good news is, we can carry the money over and probably hit those on the next round. So. And then also, in the federal programs, in Title II, where we do most of our professional development, we do have the option of converting some of that to some salaries. And we will be looking at that option on the elementary side if we have money available to do that. So our instructional coaches, they instruct teachers, right? So that's professional development that they're providing to teachers. And we can convert some of their salaries to a professional development use and access some of those. And we have those kind of on the back burner that if we need to, you know, to balance this budget, we can make some of those moves. We have a few other things still in the works that could, that we could do some movement of dollars and get a little closer to zero. But I, these numbers are small enough that literally, we could get to the end of the school year and not tap the interlocal agreement fund at all. Now we're getting, and remember, one of the concerns on the elementary side was that this shortfall should not be more than what we could actually garner on a levy. So now we are in range that if we decided to go for a levy, we could actually fund this budget. But we need to be careful not to create a budget that we could know, never actually fund legally with a levy. So I think it's falling into place nicely, and we'll just keep working on it until you see it again in June, and then again in August.
Hey, Gwen?
Yep.
Can you refresh my memory? Did we ask for an increase in enrollment on the elementary side, too, with the pre-K?
We did, and we're still working on that, Lance. I haven't put those numbers in here. We wanted to get kindergarten enrollment, which is happening now, and look at that and see if we had, how many students we thought we could fill in those three potential K-1 or early kindergarten courses. And then we'll prepare that. I'm going to go ahead and send the high school one off, and because we have some deadlines. And then all I'll have left is to do the elementary. But we want to make certain that those numbers, again, are going to show up. And so we want to be pretty, as certain as we can be when we ask for it upfront. The downside to waiting till October, remember, is the first 25 kids don't count. And then we can only access the state share, so we can't access local share. So it does behoove us to ask upfront, but you have to be pretty certain it's going to happen. But yes, Lance, we'll be doing that eventually.
Thank you.
Other questions? Questions from anybody on the phone? Amy?
I have a question. But did somebody else get to?
Nope. That's all you, Amy.
Okay. Lance, this maybe should be an agenda item in the future. I just want to just put something out there maybe for the board consideration. I'm looking at the fact that we are going to get a recommendation for central administration salaries and for the principal salaries. And I remember, like, my first year, seeing that 1% that Gwen put, and, you know, you kind of see that. And then I think what we got was a 4% request or something. And there was very little, there was like no discussion. It was, I felt like I needed more information, but I think everybody's awesome. The administrators, the principals are awesome. But I am wondering if we could have more board involvement in that process, so that the board is really informed about, you know, past practices, you know, do we always meet what the teachers give, what's our history with this? And so it, you know, I got a couple comments from the public that when we were doing this last time, it looked like the administrators are giving themselves their own raises. And I think we want to get away from that and just have more board involvement, if that makes sense, what I'm asking.
I do believe, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but usually it's pretty heavily vetted at the Personnel Committee?
Personnel and Finance. And I'll just say that, if you recall, last June, the person presenting the information was Jack Valen. And based on his analysis of all of the pay rates and increases across the district. And it's always, again, you don't want any particular employee group falling behind. And so again, certainly a reasonable request, and we'll certainly-
Right. I guess I just, yeah. So the Personnel Committee is really kind of a negotiation. It seems to me that it's kind of a negotiation. And, you know, if you're presented to it at the time, you know, maybe it's just a matter of everybody being more informed when it is coming up to Personnel, that that's a good one for us all to maybe, I'm on Personnel, so I'll be there. But just the process of, you know, having some time for the board to actually give some feedback or ask questions instead of, you know, it's a really big, it's a big number usually that comes at us. And, you know, I just think some more information is good.
Sure. Thank you, Amy.
First of all, Amy, I 150% appreciate your attitude about the budget at every level. So I'm totally glad that you bring this to the board. But I remember the meeting a year ago in the Finance Committee where we talked about how big a raise we were going to give the administrators. And I felt pretty involved in that. I would invite Mark and Kelly and anybody that wants to, and this is a truly open-minded question. I don't intend- I don't intend it to be a leading question. I'm not sure if the word "negotiation" is an appropriate term to use when we get involved in administrators. And I would invite Mark and Kelly and any other administrator that would like to talk about that, because not every discussion about compensation is what I call a negotiation.
Correct. And I, I would say that, to clarify, that since the topic of administrators has come up and is on the table, our administrative team is non-bargain, so that they are not represented by a collective bargain, bargain agreement. In my opinion, that's a good thing. That's my opinion. So we have not traditionally bargained with them like we do other employee groups. At the end of the day, we, we bargain with our, our bargain groups, and then we look at what raises this employee group received. And if you recall, Jack's table went back five or six years. It had all of the data. And I will tell you that, and I've said this before, if anyone wants to be informed about our budgets and where we're spending the money and where we're not, everyone has the opportunity. Everyone can attend those meetings. But I will tell you, it's a big commitment, and it takes time. You're not going to jump into a meeting here or there and fully understand this budget. It's complex. But if you want to, go for it, and you have that ability. So, again, our administrative team is not a bargain group. Typically, it's a discussion, and it's a review, and we always involve the Personnel and the Finance in that review, and then we come to the board, as previous years, we come to a recommendation that is, that is always driven out of Finance. And if you recall, we got to a salary schedule for our central office administrators. Everyone except the superintendent is now on a salary schedule in similar fashion to what we did for our principals four years ago. And so those are, in my mind, those are important and monumental agreements and, and decisions that the, the board has made, and I think they're the right decisions, because now we have a salary schedule. And we're not, it, it adds some clarity. Then it's, it's like any other salary schedule, what appropriate cost of living adjustment should be applied, and that's really moving forward where we're at. Is that it?
Yeah, and that, I just thank you for, for that, because what you just said is what I remember. I just wanted to make sure that my memory served me in that regard. I did not, at any point in discussing administrator compensation, feel under informed.
Okay, good to know. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks. Lance?
Good.
Kelly, head or hands?
Oh, Kelly.
I remember currently, last year, we were discussing this crazy spot, and Gwen and I, we had worked on a document that, what we called, we had all these files in it, and we did a full audit from A to Z on every single employee classification in the district. And it didn't matter who it was, what, if every single classification was in a column. And we made sure that going across the row, that things were fair and equitable, and it would be easier. Maybe have something in the future for the Personnel Committee, we could bring that back out, just to make sure that the new members of the board have a look at that document. And so that added some additional time to the conversation, and there were some inaccuracies and some misquies, and we got it all cleaned up. I mean, it is, it's a real solid document that will work well to the district in the future and make sure that we are financially responsible when it comes to not only just the salary, but the benefits and everything else. So we'll, we'll bring that back out again for the new trustees that are on the board. That adds a lot of time to the discussion.
Thank you, Kelly.
And we'll definitely bring forward to Personnel and to Finance conversations about the salaries for those groups.
All right. Thank you. So COVID-19-related costs.
Yeah, so, you know, we, I want to touch on two things before we can leave the budget piece. So we've heard discussion about the fact that we're not using substitutes, right? Because our teachers are all teaching remotely, and so no requirement for substitutes for classified staff or certified staff. And so we will have some savings in substitute costs. Our MOAs rolled unused leave from this year into next year's budget. So theoretically, people will be taking that leave next year. So the savings that we realized this year for sub-costs will probably be spent into next year. So oftentimes, there's a plus, and then there's a, you know, the other side of it as well. So I think there'll be a balance there. Another piece that we've talked about is the fact that our students haven't been traveling for baseball and track and, and those sorts of things this spring. So there will be some savings there. On the flip side of that, the students that paid participation fees to do all of those athletics will not be paying those, well, they paid them, and now we're going to give them their money back. So oftentimes, where there's a savings, then on the flip side, there's probably a lack of revenue. So always good conversation, you know, happy to know what people are thinking, but just keeping in mind that oftentimes, there's, not all of our revenues are whole. We are refunding lunch costs to parents. We're refunding transportation. People buy transportation for their students to school if they live within the three miles. We're going to be refunding some of those. We're refunding some traffic ed fees that, for kids who can't take traffic ed. We're refunding the participation fees. And so we're doing a lot of that right now, and so that will change the look of some of that, what we think are going to be savings. And so just keep that in mind. The, so the COVID-19-related costs, the idea behind this is just to start keeping track of some of the potential costs, or maybe even costs that have already incurred, so that when we're ready to actually utilize that money, we'll have some ideas on where we've spent, that we might be able to reimburse, or how we want to use that money going forward. And we do have a year to spend it, but we're just starting the list. We know, you know, right off the bat, and I think Mike brought this out in an earlier, in the conversation at Finance, that at the very top of the list is ways to help address students who haven't, that need some additional help when they return. So right at the top of the list, we also know that, you know, some replacement of textbooks, supplies, equipment, maybe even some uniforms that were distributed that we may or may not get back. Technology needs, the obvious needs are cleaning in the buildings. We bought some foggers for cleaning, that sort of thing. The food service, we're not sure what that's going to look like at the end of the day, because it's a different model that we just shifted to, you know, overnight. And we, we have a balance, a positive balance in the food service fund at the end of March, and I just want to make sure that we hold that fund harmless, because we do not subsidize our lunch program at all. We, it is self-sufficient, and I would hate to see this process put us in the red that we may never be able to, to get back out of. So want to keep that on the front. We realize in, in this process that we have one person in the district that can do payroll. Mike had a question?
No, no, it's premature, just before you change the subject.
Okay. And that's not a good place to be in an organization of this size. And so we're in the process of trying to get a payroll backup person trained, and we might have some costs related to that. We are going to have some increased retiree termination payouts, because those have to do with leave. Leave that's not going to be used now will need to be paid out. And then that leave rollover, and Amy read this in the packet, because she mentioned this, so that's, in looking at the leave rollovers that are going to occur, this is our potential cost in substitutes to cover for those teachers, either in comp time or use of that leave. We know that we, a year ago in March, we had one uninsured claim, and this year in March, we had 39. All of our substitutes were encouraged to go on unemployment, because we had no employment for them. And so we know that we're going to have some increased costs there. We may have some potential for some health insurance plan needs out of that. Oh, actually, this one is the, our health insurance plan under federal regulations has to cover 100% of any COVID treatments or testing, and of course, we didn't really plan for that. We haven't had any of those costs to date, but we're still early in this process. And so that's another place that we might need some additional funding. So just kind of building that list so that when it comes time to, to decide how we're going to use those funds, we have some good, solid data to use. So questions there? Mike?
And forgive me for, if I'm dragging things up. So I'm going to speak of an issue that has the potential of being sensitive. I just want to know something about the conversations that are going on. I'm going to speak about stipends. My understanding is that once a contract is agreed upon with a teacher or an administrator that includes a stipend, and that stipend is funded, that that's a done deal for that fiscal year, as in the present case. Even though baseball isn't being played and track isn't being run, those stipends are part of the existing contract and will be paid. Now, I have a second part, but tell me if I'm right or wrong before I go further.
You're correct.
I'm correct.
Based on the MOA, the stipends are in the MOA.
Now, if that's the case, we are already seeing headlines, speculation, will there be a football season? Will, will the virus research? Will this, will that? So I would invite comment without any expectation of commitment, what is being talked about versus the deadline at which administrator and teacher contracts have to be renewed, including stipends, versus what people see on the horizon about if these types of activities are even going to happen next year. So kind of controversial, not trying to put anybody on the spot, not asking any commitments, but what's the buzz? What's being talked about?
Want to go first?
Take it away, Mark. I'll let you take this one.
So at the May, our plan is to move, I'll say, all primary staff contracts forward for approval at our May business meeting. That's May 12. That typically is the time, timeline that we have always done. Now, Tracy, are you still on board? So that will be at the May 12. Now, with the reality of, of fall sports, those, those have not been issued, they have not been signed for next year, and it, to a great extent, it's a wait-and-see as to what the reality of August will be. And from a school standpoint, I will tell you that we have had several discussions and continue to have even more thorough planning in regards to what our, I'll say, backup plan, just because I don't know if it will need to be rolled out, but we want to be prepared. We know that regardless of what August brings in regards to limitations or restrictions, if any, we know that the start of our school year is going to look differently because of the fact that we have, unfortunately, for some, for some of our students, a, a growing achievement gap that has to be addressed. So we're, we're going to make plans for that, and, and we're going to be prepared to address those. And I think that in some cases, our, our stimulus money can support us in that regard. It may be, it may be a summer school program that we're able to offer, if that, again, is still being discussed as to what that looks like. But at this point, we're certainly not making commitments, but at the same time, we are moving forward with the information that we have, and that will unfold, you know, over time. I wish I could, we all wish we had a crystal ball.
Sure. And that's a real question. On May 12, we're going to have to make a decision about administrative contracts with whatever information we have available.
Well, not just administrator, all, all staff.
All contracts, right.
Yeah.
But what, but if we, but if we have some, Kelly, let me listen to you.
I pulled out the resource department timeline, and they have stipends coming to the board on June 9, 2020.
And just, just for everyone's knowledge, stipends are a $1 million item in our budget. It's a big deal. It's the difference between making the budget and not making the budget. And I'm totally pro-activity, pro-stipends, but I just need to bring it up, because it's such a large item.
So, so again, the May business meeting will have certified renewals, certified non-renewals, bus drivers, nurses, principal renewals, administrative renewals, central office, as well as non-renewals, and then new hires. So literally, all, what I would refer to as the positions that Caliscope Public Schools need to have in order to run our school system for next year, outside of stipends, will, will come to you on May 12. Our plan is to come with stipends on June 9. If we have information that leads us to believe that fall sports may be interrupted in that, you know, what, that's six weeks down the, down the road, then that may change that. But at least we have a little bit more breathing room in that regard.
Well, that's very clear to me, Mark. Just, just along those two dates, May 12 and June 9, I think, it serves me, you know, to know that that's where we're going to have to, we're going to have to have a plan.
Yeah, if we, if we need to postpone that to our July meeting, and keep in mind that we typically have one meeting in July, although you have a new superintendent, he may have a whole new expectation.
Sit back down, Mike.
It's not, it's not unreasonable to, to say that we could consider if there were, again, information that we don't know now that we know come the 1st of June. We could consider postponing that to that July meeting. It's, it's a little, again, many of our sports, and this is, you know, this was part of the reason for the, the decision of, of paying those stipends this year. Many of our sports are, are year-round activ-, I mean, they're, they put in a ton of time. And I, I can, I, I know if, if some of the fall coaches heard me say what I just said, they would be cringing, because they have opportunities that they want to get going. And that does place them maybe in a, in a, a little bit of a more precarious. But let's just take it one step at a time.
Right.
I'm not saying that there will be a need for that, but we have options as we move forward.
Thank you.
Kelly?
This is a point of information on Tuesday, May 12. Gwen, Mike, and I are meeting with two of our school principals in the spirit to do what we're referring to as a stipend audit and a discussion about what it's going to look like this summer and fall, so that we have a plan. And so that's on the docket. When I say audit, we're going to go through every single line item of every stipend to make sure that it's clean and we don't have duplications, and we're just going to tidy up the whole thing, so that's our ability. We, we are well aware that we need to do some serious planning and have a, an approach going into the fall, and so we've already scheduled a meeting, and everyone has accepted, like, the degree narrow, so forget it. has accepted, like, pretty narrow, so, forget.
Sounds good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? So, just touching one last thing on our savings account, which is also the interlocal agreement. And so, this, up on the screen, is the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty activities that could place in that account. And we did spend a few dollars on some floor refinishes, and we have some money set aside there to help out the high school technology fund, which we are going to need. So, we'll be seeing a transfer out of there sometime before June thirtieth. And then, I did take a look today to see what, what might be available in the general fund, transportation fund, tuition fund, adult ed fund, as far as carryover to next year. Interestingly enough, those are all awaiting their second payment of taxes. So, to try to estimate that would be very premature. So, but there's fairly healthy balances in those funds right now, and we just need to look to, you know, we won't know till June fifteenth what those balances look like, but we will be able to move some year-end funds into, into the interlocal agreement fund. We may not be moving out of the transportation fund going forward because remember, our plan is to try to amass money for the need for that facility. So, but tuition and adult ed funds are fairly healthy, and then the general fund will be, that's the crystal ball, for sure. So, but then, we have, we have some earmarks in the interlocal agreement fund for things that we don't typically budget for on an annual basis because we don't do these things on an annual basis. So, it doesn't make sense to put those in a budget. And so, we'll have the curriculum set aside and the ongoing set aside for turf, track, and gym floor refinishes. So, but then, other than that, it's a fairly clean slate. And you know that any expenditures out of these funds has to come to the board. So, there's no surprises in this fund. But we will be, you know, planning on some expenditures out of our, out of our savings account to help fund next year's budget shortfall.
Gwen, just to, just to clarify, the items in red above, those have been encumbered?
Yes.
And so, the totals that you show at the very bottom, the one-point-two-five and the two-point-five-nine-seven are unencumbered?
Those are debt, is that correct?
Yes.
Those are debt?
Yes.
So, those are dollars that are available that have not been allocated at this point in time?
In any way.
Yeah.
So, that's the last piece. Any questions there?
Tell us, what is that, what is that total amount for the last couple of years? Is that higher? Or did it used to be three million and some, and now we got it down to this, or?
Yeah. When you add them together, it's still three-point-seven million. So, it's as healthy as it's ever been. This has grown over time since two thousand and ten. So, but it hovers around that three million. And, and some of the, some of the need there is as long as we have a two-point-five-million-dollar shortfall in the health insurance fund, we can't let this savings account fall below that. Because that's a, that's a real debt that we have to take care of. And so, you know, we always have to keep our eye on that. If we can solve the health insurance challenge, then that frees up our savings account a little bit more. But as long as we have that debt, we have to have at least that much in this, in this fund. But there's still another, you know, eight-hundred thousand to a million dollars available. But that's the rainy day fund, so.
Do you think we're gonna be okay on our cash flow to meet our debt service obligation?
I actually don't think we are. I think we're gonna be very close, but I bet we'll probably be looking to this fund.
I think that's also to get us over the cash flow if the tax collections don't support our debt service fund coming due in May, is that correct?
Right. Yeah. And I touched on that at finance. So, the debt service, its only revenue source is tax collection, right? So, and there's no reserve in that fund. Like, on the general fund, there's some reserve. We can massage those expenditures so that we don't exceed our cash flow on the general fund. And the debt service is more challenging because it's very straightforward. We budget to spend every penny of it, and if we don't collect every penny of it, we're going to have a shortfall. And we have to make our debt payment. That's not an option. So, we will be looking to the interlocal agreement to.
And that's what, three and a half million?
Our, our debt service payment in June is three and a half million. Now, we've done, we've, we've collected about twenty percent of the second half taxes because many people pay all of their taxes upfront and don't worry about that second payment, right? So, we've collected some of that. But it's highly likely that we will have a shortfall. And we had a shortfall in the debt service last year of about twelve thousand dollars in the elementary and the high schools. And I just booked the liability to push it into the next year. But you can do that with twelve thousand dollars, but much beyond that, we need to, we will have to make good on that. And it could be as long as a year before we collect those.
Before we make it up, yeah.
Yeah. So, we do, that's, that's very definitely a, and I actually have it booked here in my list so that I don't forget that I, I might need some money there. So. Good point, Mike.
Well, you brought, it's a good point because you explained it very clearly in the finance committee, which is where the action is focused. You know, show up at seven-thirty, it's worth it.
Thank you, Mike.
All I know, all I know is what Gwen told me, my meeting before this one. Beyond that, I know nothing.
Mike, you have to make sure that they can reserve two to three hours.
Oh, you're gonna be there?
No, no, no. Finance, please.
Between me and Jack, Ben, you know, bring, bring breakfast.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you, Gwen.
Yeah, thank you. And Mark, I'll get off.
Yep. Thank you.
Instructional format and plan for the remainder of a year.
Let me get back on the screen here. We, and I'll speak to the first, and that is a recommendation, and I'll bring that up in a minute, to remain remote distance learning for all students for the balance of the year. And we'll, we'll speak to that. But I wanna, before we jump into the, to the motion itself, I do want to share with you the process that was, that went on in determining that. Shortly, actually, when the, before the governor made his announcement, we were in a, a Northwest Mass meeting, which is all of our Valley Superintendent and Lead Principals. When I say Lead Principals, some of our partner districts do not have superintendents, they have Lead Principals. And we were, we discussed, we looked at, we knew what we were going to be up against. And then, after, while we were actually in that meeting, we found out what the governor's recommendation was. And we begin to look at the requirements that would be placed on us if we, if we considered going back on May seventh. And it was, I'll just say, long conversation short, there was not one superintendent or principal in the room that felt that going back was the, the right decision to make. We then followed up that same day with a double A superintendent video conference and a similar story. So, as of, at present, we have every district that has brought this recommendation to their Board of Trustees, it has been approved. We have Billings, Bozeman, Helena, Butte, West Valley, Evergreen, Kyla, Eureka, Troy. Everyone was having a meeting either this week, and there's another double A, I believe it's Helena, that, that actually, I think Great Falls had a meeting today, are recommending it at, at a future meeting. The bottom line is, we had also quite a bit of unsolicited response from our parents and, and our staff. I will tell you that our phones were, were humming and, and emails were coming in. We felt that we needed to communicate what our intentions were from a Valley standpoint. This, this decision, we really tried to work together and coordinate so that, that we were, we were all hoping to be on the same page. Because it's a small community, and one district to the next impacts one another. And so, the double As are all recommending remote learning as well. I will tell you that prior to my announcement, every email was in support of staying with remote learning. When I made my announcement to staff and families, I've had a handful, less than six of, of those folks reaching out to me and, and speaking to the fact that they supported returning to school. So, I will tell you that it's been probably five to one. And it's not that this is a, whichever side has the most support is what we go with. This is something from a superintendent and administrative standpoint, we just have serious concerns about returning and what that looks like, and the requirements and limitations that we, that we would have to face. So, again, we worked hand in hand with our county, city health departments. This letter is from Hillary Hansen and the other actual leads from Lake County and Lincoln County. The bottom line is, given the complexities associated with the full reopening, we support the superintendent recommendation that school should continue with online remote learning until the end of this school year. So, with that, I shared with you and all of our families and all of our staff, the recommendation that would be moving forward. And again, that is to recommend a continuation of online learning as described in our previously submitted action plan for all students. With the possibility, on a very limited and targeted basis, the ability of our building administrators to work collaboratively with staff and determine if a student should be invited in for a one-on-one check for academic and/or social emotional reasons. And we have kids with some pretty serious mental health issues. We want the opportunity to check. We're actually meeting with a small group of administrators to, to set up our guidelines for what we're going to use to determine when those kids are, are, and if they are brought in, and, and the parameters that we would, and framework that we'd use to, to be consistent. We don't want one school heading in this direction and another school heading in this direction on that particular topic. I will tell you that not all school districts that are, that are recommending online learning, which we are for the rest of the year for all students, not all districts are opening the door as ever so small of a crack that it may be. Not all are opening that. And there are, there's a little concern in regards to equity and so forth. I think we can deal with that. I think we can, can allow an appropriate touch point with our most, you know, with the kids that we feel we need that between now and the end of the year. It's not gonna be small group instruction. It may not even touch on instruction. It's just how you're doing. We haven't heard from you, and, and inviting it in in that way. So, with that, I've included the recommendation and actually have the motion that would be appropriate if the board supports this and moves forward. Not to put any pressure on you, but it's all the information I've had, it has, have been solid support and backing from, from trustees, as I've mentioned. So, happy to, to have a discussion or answer questions as to our reasoning and rationale for this, but certainly strongly recommend this recommendation.
Trustees, are there any questions?
Mark, I have a question. I am in complete support of continuing with the remote learning. I am a little concerned about opening that door to the one-on-one, not that, I don't wanna provide support for those kids, of course I do. But I was glad to hear you say that you are meaning to set up the criteria for who would be eligible for that. Does it say anywhere in there that this support can be both online, off-site, or?
Well, we're continuing with online. So, that's a given.
Yeah.
For all students.
Yeah.
We're not changing that.
Okay. And we're continuing to give this support right now?
Yes.
For the kids, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So, all kids, so, again, the, the crux of this is, all kids will continue with online remote learning, period. We'd like the opportunity. And let me also talk with you about some, some, some things that are unique to, to Calaiscope Public Schools. We have an ag center. I mean, there are a lot of new baby animals, and there's crops to be planted. And our ag center staff are there every day dealing with these. They'd like to be able to engage kids on a very small, limited basis at the ag center, at our student-built homes, and at some of our other vocational programs. So, again, practicing social distancing. And when I say small groups, we're talking maybe two or three kids at a time, engaging in a, in a large area where we're, we're very comfortable in, in the safeguards that would be in place. So, just some additional challenges there that we want to be able to address appropriately. And yes, we decided today at our administrative meeting that we'd have a small group, two elementary administrator reps, middle school administrator and two high school, and we'd sit down and just have a conversation in regards to what framework. I know, I know this is a concern, and if the board felt uncomfortable in, in that portion of this recommendation, then strike it and we stay with online. But I think we can make it work. And I just think that it's the right thing to do just to have that option. And I said, it's a possibility. It's not for sure. We'll set up some frameworks so it's consistent across the district.
My only concern is that if we allow some kids to come back to take care of their baby animals or to build the house, but we're not allowing that for all our students, is that gonna open up, you know?
I don't think so. I, I, there is, running a, a, a farm is a different beast. We can't let animals die. We're not, of course, and our staff would not. But that, that was, I'll just say it this way, the ag center and even our student-built homes was never intended to be operated and run by the small staff that are onsite. That's just a given. And that's the situation we're in. The opportunity is there, based on the governor's orders, but again, for all students, the online will continue.
Jack?
Well, my question is gonna go to the one-on-one, and you're talking about the need for small groups of twos or threes. So, is one-on-one ratio that that's there, is that too limiting? And should be, the word small groups be inserted instead?
I think that's gonna even open up the door more, and.
I didn't know if, because of the discussions you were having with small groups, which makes perfect sense to me, given some of those circumstances, because our student home build is incurring additional expenses that they wouldn't otherwise have because they have to bring contractors in to do the work that the students were doing. Not that you couldn't have three or four students in there practicing social distancing and learning the skills that they were hoping to have to begin with. That's rather different. That's rather difficult for a family to do at home, unless their parents need to have something remodeled, I suppose.
I would say if we strike anything, I would strike the one-on-one and simply say that a student should be invited for a check for academic and/or social emotional.
I'm comfortable with that.
You're not?
I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with that. That gives us enough leeway and still be a fairly narrow focus. So we could certainly, when the motion is made, we could make that change.
Micah?
I would add is that, you know, like the whole Ag Center, if they have four or five staff onsite, you know, in a one-to-one scenario, you could potentially have four or five students then, which would make that a small group. But you're still maintaining the one-to-one ratio of staff.
Mike?
Yeah, and trying to contribute to what Jack and Micah have said, it looks to me like that sentence basically amounts to a conference. A student should be invited in to confer to see if a support beyond what's possible online should be offered to that student. I don't see that sentence as having anything to do with what we're talking about. We're not asking, like, hey, do you need, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but hey, do you need help planting a crop? Is that an educational thing we should show you? This is just making sure, in my mind, it's making sure that we are really saying, does this student need more help than we can give online? And that the administration gets together and discusses it. And if they are in favor of it, they say, well, then let's bring the student in and have a conference. That, to me, is exactly what it says. It doesn't really say anything about anything else.
Well, and the reality is, those students, if invited, if allowed in very small numbers to be onsite at the Ag Center, that every one of those students are still going to have online work and online responsibilities. That will continue. So we're not changing the online support and remote learning.
Yeah, I think if we just take the one-to-one, I think we're good.
So I'd like to invite, Amy?
This is Ursula, can I? Does Amy have a question? Okay. I just wanted to kind of add on to there that, you know, when we talk about the students who may need something, and I know I keep saying this in all of our meetings, but we have the group of students that we already have identified that are high needs. But when we talk about that equity piece, I think that if we just open up the possibility that there may be kids who haven't been identified yet, who maybe typically are doing okay but are struggling more in this situation. And, you know, just open up the possibility that it might be a lot more kids than typical that need that. You know, obviously, there's only so much time and space and energy to do that. But I just, I think that there are a lot of kids who maybe haven't been identified in the past who we're managing to kind of get by, who might need who might need that opportunity for a conference or something like that. But I really appreciate that we're opening up that opportunity. I just think that we need to be kind of broad at our looking for who it might be that needs that.
Thank you, Ursula. Mike?
Well, I really appreciate that, Ursula. But you know what comes to mind? Is earlier in this meeting when Marissa was presenting, and I was really struck by how they look at every kid almost every day, you know? And the language up here is exactly what they're already doing. They're looking at every kid every day. They got this checklist, emails, this, that, the other thing. They're already doing this. They are already identifying students that may need to be invited in for a one-to-one check. I don't see, given the passion, the professionalism, and the diligence already demonstrated in Marissa's presentation, I don't think anybody's going to get overlooked or unidentified.
Thank you. So I'd like to invite public comment at this time. Are there members of the audience who wish to address the Board of Trustees? There we go. Do you want to come up here and then state your name?
My name is Melanie Dussey. I have a senior head literature, a sophomore literature, and I have a eighth grader at West Valley who attends a first period for algebra. So I thank you all for taking time. I know this is not a glorious job to have work in on a school ward. But a couple of things with this. I understand you're with a disease, you're not willing to pass it, spread it, or have our students skip it. On the same hand, I understand you have children freaking out. But I'd like, I think I would have liked maybe then you coming to us and asking for more of what our students have. Sometimes when parents freak out, it might only be one group of parents that freaking out. I'm wanting to say I would like to see it open. So you talked about identifying students who need help. This is not a typical situation. In a classroom setting, you only have a small group of students who need help. With this setting, that has changed today, I'm like, man. I think the teachers are doing the best job that they can in this situation. But as far as every student they reach every day, it's not happening. The teachers are under their own stress. It is not a typical situation. I have students who've been waiting days for responses. They can't send their homework in online because they haven't gotten the answers for the help they need. I would love to see the school open, not in a traditional sense. I would have liked to see discussion on what other options we have. What if we have one grade level come in one day a week? That would give us four days a week each grade level. Yet, into the classroom setting again, just to return the sunset normalcy for them? Because what is happening, like, grade kids, they have a great break. They are charging online. They want to do this to them. They just want to stop, like, what is the point? If you tell me we may not start again in the fall, I'm really not, though. What is the point? Why do I continue doing this? Still, not a whole lot of interaction. So I would have liked to see some discussion about what other options we have other than just continuing online. We are looking at the fall, but it's being different. If this returns again, what are we going to do? Just continue online? That gap for students is increasing. My students, you know, like I said, have waited a couple days to get responses. They're stuck. If they could go into school one day a week, let them up in a classroom with just one grade level, have one teacher there. If they need help, they can get it. Teachers are really cheap teachers. There's a number of different things that could be done to address that. But even just getting back into the classroom setting, I think would give them just a little bit of normalcy. And also a time to just kind of improve through.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike?
Well, we're having a discussion now. Can we just open up again and pick up where we left off?
Open up again?
The schools. Can we just say, okay, everybody back in schools tomorrow? We're just going to pick up where we left off and finish up the year. Can we do that?
No.
What would opening the schools tomorrow intend?
Well, we couldn't open the schools tomorrow because of the governor's order. But if we considered opening on May 7th?
I'm sorry.
There would be a variety of, number one, we'd have limitations that were placed on us. We could not place more than 10 students. If we could practice appropriate social distancing in a classroom, not more than 10 in any given area, we would have to be checking temperatures before the child got walked into the building. So who's going to do that? Who's qualified to do that? We have, my understanding is that the airport, we have the Army Reserve doing that. The issue of appropriate safety, whether it's masks or otherwise, we would not be, we would want to provide masks for certain situations. But we have barely enough masks now for our staff in food service and custodial. So again, the health department weighed in. They do not see any reasonable means of schools reopening, given the limitations that are placed on us. And I would, you know, I should have said this at the beginning. I would like nothing more than to open our schools back and bring our kids back in. We all miss them dearly. We just, again, there's a reason why every school district in the Valley and certainly the double A's are making their recommendations and the decisions they are.
Calis, please go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but the health department has also recommended that the students stay together. In a regular high school situation, they have a different teacher every period, and there were different students every period. Mix it all up. But they're saying you can't do that, that may come in a period one of those, you need to have those kids stay together the whole day. Because if one of them infects somebody else, you have to be able to track where, who they were in contact. You can't just let it go free range. On the transportation, my understanding is it's one student per seat. And we don't have nearly the buses or bus drivers to change to a one child per seat. There we go.
And if we open the schools to all students on May 7th, can every teacher just pull out the lesson plan that they'd already prepared for May 7th and start teaching? Or are they going to have to reassess their students? And then, as they did when we went online, basically redo their whole plan for the remainder of the year based on where the kids are now? Can they just pick up where they would have been on May 7th and go to the end of the year?
Well, to make that, any teacher making that assumption to just move forward would be, would not be appropriate. We know that there's going to be a variety of reassessment when we are able to bring kids back in. And that's an important part of the strategies and the plan that we have already begun to discuss, but certainly working in more detail. We want time with our staff between now and the last day of school to be able to have that discussion. And we have a tentative plan in moving that forward. But to answer your question, it's not just walking back in and picking up where we left off.
I just wanted to make that clear. Nothing is more important than the health and safety. But just, but in addition to that, I wanted to know your opinion if there was also a huge, from bus drivers down to classroom teachers, whoa, we just can't pick up, you know, where we were on, whatever we shut down.
Yeah, the other piece is that, and other districts have expressed this concern, that for a variety of reasons, our bus drivers, many of them, can't say necessarily majority, but many, many of them are in the protected class of being over age-wise. And so we'd have very serious concerns as to whether we could even get buses, you know, how many buses on the road.
All right, well, thank you for that additional information.
Marissa?
Just another thought of perspective, you know, in the land of little people, teenagers and first graders do not socially distance well at all. They're constantly crawling on top of each other, hugging each other. We're not able to go out to recess without, you know, cleaning stuff off appropriately. You can't go to the lunchroom. So they're going to be stuck in a classroom, say, even if you did come back with 10 kids, with one teacher and, you know, 10 kids in a classroom. It's just really not easy for the land of little people. Just as another perspective, you know, it's much easier to get older students to listen to us more effectively and will stay. But I think just, you know, the little ones coming in, they're going to be so excited to see their teachers and be, you know, and for us to have to say, whoa, 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 you know, six feet away. They're just not going to understand that at all.
I think it could be difficult, even if we do get to open next year at the correct time, it's going to be hard going then, just over the summer, to prepare for it.
More discussions on that to come. But we'll, is there other public comment here? Yes, come on up. And I didn't say this before, but we'll try to keep our comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Michael Schaub, of course. I'm a local counselor down, really, because we also help parents. I'm also a parent of two kids, elementary level. I will say, I also, as a mom, would love to ask my opinion, because now I'm a teacher. Do, I work, and I'm also a teacher. So it's super important for you all to remember, you need to be asking our opinions as well. How is it going? You don't really know how it's going when you ask them. They're asking, you know, I appreciate they're asking the teachers, but as some of them, as asked, is that going? Those two little kids, online, online, or whatever you want to call it, they're not really learning. So I think if we, if we change it, they're learning. Some kids probably are, but mine super not. And I, you know, I have a doctorate, I'm not a media, I'd like to be a good mom. So I feel like I can work on this pretty well. But it's not really helping. So that was a comment, it's crazy, you know, tiny, but something about sending a survey. I would love to go out. I did end up doing one, one full year that I didn't offer me. But I would have loved to have asked that question. I also would like to see, I like, I would like to put in the flexibility to open it up. I, you have a child that is probably in your higher specific, you're teaching of. So I have a child with autism, she's in a life of self-attitude. She's much a hundred percent of her day. That's a beautiful one, I'm proud of you.
First of all, thank you. Everybody on this board knows that I am huge on public comment. And I have a lot to learn about how to be the trustee, how to be an elected public official, a representative of the community. So in sincerity and humility, I ask you this question. How would you have preferred to have been asked? What would that have looked like?
I would have asked a survey about what kind of, what kind of research do you have at home? I did a survey about that. And I responded because, you know, I do have computer, you know, I have this. So I would have asked about that. I would have liked to have another survey saying, how is it going? Because I'm also not having to sort of regular contact with teachers once in a while. We, my kids are not really doing work, like maybe some of the students are. And I'm not really having a lot of teachers responding saying, hey, what's the matter? Do you need some help? Like, I'm not really having that response. And my daughter is a super kind of a kid. So I'm kind of surprised. But I do, I'm not, I know that everyone is under a lot of good hearts. But the other thing I would say, my daughter has 19. She hasn't had no services in over a month and a half, potentially. She also is one of the few kids in our school district that has qualified for summer school. There's not very many of them, but she has one. She did come to the last year, and she's supposed to do it this year. So the IEP team has determined she regresses. It's bad enough, but she needs to keep getting services in the summer. And so I am super concerned now that my daughter has gone a month and a half without any services. She does get speech normally, she gets OC normally. She has services, she's not getting them now because she just slams down the laptop when it's time. You know, they're trying. I think the teachers and everyone are great, they're trying. Well, my daughter will slam down the laptop and won't do it. So I don't know, I would love for my daughter to be one of the few that possibly can go into the school with a para, and the paras need work right now. Can she go in with her para and use some, even if it's just a little bit, a little bit of work?
Will you have, I'm sorry. So will you have a moment after the meeting to have a word with Superintendent Pluton? Make sure that he has the information he needs. And thank you so much for pointing out ways that we can do better.
Yeah, we have.
Thank you, April.
All right, we're good, yeah. But again, thank you for coming.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board of Trustees? Sir, and then we'll go to Jason.
Hi, Mr. Paul, you guys see that I have three high schoolers? Paul, I have three high schoolers, the Lashan High School, and I wasn't here to hear the presentation that Mike referred to about everything's going great and the feedback one-on-one, but I know that my three high schoolers are waiting two to three days to get simple questions to answer. And I say simple because these are all classes and some that I, that I took way back in the day, but I believe that unless you're a teacher, you can't answer these questions. My kids are all in AP, four-year-olds students and they're not getting back and it's frustrating to them, which is translated into frustration for our family. I know we're not alone because we have extraordinary neighbors experiencing similar things. And so, I'm wondering what is going on to make sure that the teachers are accountable getting back to students because that's really where there's a gap right now.
So, Mr. Hill, can you follow up with him either tomorrow or later tonight?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Jason?
So, I'll unmute and you just have to state your name and then can I hear it?
Okay. All right. Please state your name and you have three minutes. Rebecca, are you there?
Oh, sorry, can I be heard?
You can be heard. So, you got three minutes?
Okay.
Please.
My first comment is to an earlier, um, point, when we were talking about, um, the stipends, I wanna make the point that not all stipends are sports. In fact, the math counts has been one of the most involved thing in online learning. So, do remember that not all stipends are canceled. Okay, now my three minutes, let's see. Um, I really wanted to ask you to consider whether you should vote today on the issue of the school closings for six weeks. If we do make this decision, let's make it on data, not on emotion. It's great to have a plan in place, but we learn a lot. On March 13th, we got that excellent letter from Mark Plato with benchmarks about how, what would happen in different situations. We don't seem to have that now. We don't seem to have a plan, a criteria, a benchmark about when we could open, so it feels like the answer is never. I don't see how September will be different from now. Governor Bullock's criteria was two weeks of a downward trend. We've seen a three-word downward trend in the state of Montana and we've seen a pronounced trend in Flathead County. There's not been a new confirmed case in Flathead County for 14 days. That's huge. That's just what we're looking for. Um, the other thing is that the CDC and other medical sources are, been really consistent in saying school closures do not have a significant impact on COVID's spread. Ah, that's what's page. If we're opening Main Street while keeping the schools closed, we're already seeing young people in groups walking together without masks or social distancing. I'd love to see the schools use this as an opportunity to model mask wearing, hand washing, daily temperature taking. Daily temperature taking is not insurmountable. We have school nurses. It may seem like five weeks is not a long time, but it's a huge amount of time. We're told by the schools that missing six days is more than a student should be absent per year. And, you know, you've said that you had a five-to-one ratio of people saying that they were against school openings. It'd be good to actually see that number. I'm sure there's a large number who won't send their students back, but we could do a questionnaire, find out how many we're talking about. Maybe it is enough so classes would be 10 kids or less. Maybe it would, we could do a soft opening of considering a few hours or a half day a week, just once.
Second.
There's some amount of time the students have teacher interaction, which is desperately important. When you say you don't wanna get a ping pong, that's what's gonna happen to us, you know, that's the exact situation we never, ready to prepare for. My basic point, though, is please don't feel you have to make this decision in a rush now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Who's next, Jason?
Mr. David Barr?
Oh, it's me.
Yep. You have three minutes, Mr. Barr.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, good, sorry, trying to unmute. For one, I wanna say I agree with our decision, or with the super test decision to close schools for the rest of the year. According to Governor Bullock's recommendations, there's really no way a school of our size could function. But I do wanna stress that there are many students that need our school to have some access, students that have really poor internet access. They can get their work done so much easier if they could just come in and use the computer lab and I think we could probably figure out a way to bring in a limited number of students at a time to get their work done at the computer lab. We also have many musical instruments that are not able to be carted off a campus for students to practice at home, like a set of timpani or a marimba or anything else that's super large like that. And then sharing those instruments is difficult. We do have all-state auditions coming up pretty soon and those students need to practice on those instruments to be ready for those auditions. Also, students need to be auditioning for college scholarships and getting ready to go on to the next level and they don't have access to those instruments. If we could bring them in one at a time to practice, that would be awesome. Also, we can bring them in to record their all-state auditions and get them ready for next year. I don't know what that's gonna look like exactly, but I'm sure seeing our downward trend and the way summer's gonna go, we'll probably have more access and, and things will open up even more. So, I would encourage us to continue to work towards a limited opening of a few students at a time in school, one-on-one basis. If you don't wanna call it one-on-one, that is fantastic. Just let us bring in students and we will work with a few numbers at a time. I think our teachers would really appreciate having face-to-face with a couple kids and I know that there are students out there that are really desperate to work with a teacher, not a screen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, Sarah Cole, are you there?
I'm there. Hi, Lance. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to reiterate what Mark had said about a group of administrators getting together to create some guidelines. I think from all of the public comment and discussion we've heard tonight, I think it's really important that we get together and have some pretty clear criteria about what that one-on-one would look like and who would be eligible. Mike, to your point, yes, Marissa exemplified just how amazing our staff is in terms of meeting individual student needs, but we were not bringing students into the school. You know, we would meet kids outside on their front lawn practicing social distancing or meet a student in the Flathead Commons outdoor area, but we have not brought kids back in school because as Mark said, we haven't had a, a system or tools in place.
I'll give you my classroom code. You can watch 30 to 40 minutes of video every single day, reading plays, teaching kids annotated bibliographies, and guess what? It's what you're asking us to do. So, I ask you to trust us and know that we're doing the right thing. We're working. We're doing okay. And if we're not getting back to your kid for a couple of days, I'm sorry, we will work harder because that's the people that work in school District 5. Those are the people that will help. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ivana, what's the penalty assessment for going overtime?
Um, it is after 30 seconds, you can't give me the one, Jack, so you could still give, and I could.
Thank you. Jason, do you have any other?
I've got one other. Chelsea, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Again, you have three minutes.
Awesome, okay. Well, first of all, just thank you all for hearing us out and for the service you're doing right now. I'm gonna get emotional, I was trying not to cry, dang it. Um, I just wanna remind everybody that all of our staff are impacted by this and this is traumatic for everybody. And I'm hearing those parents and I totally understand, like, the frustration that they feel that their kids aren't being immediately responded to. I get it. I'm in that boat with over 350 students on my caseload as a counselor and it's hard and it's, I have a one-year-old and a four-year-old and it's the most difficult work I've ever done. But I just want to remind everybody that this is not going to end when we're back in school. The impacts emotionally and cognitively and mentally that our students and our staff are feeling right now are not gonna end once we're back in the building. It's gonna be long-term. We have a lot of work to do and a lot of work ahead of us, but what our staff is doing right now is incredible. I'm involved in one of the Google classrooms for one of our math teachers and I am blown away at what she has done for her students and I'm so grateful to be included so that I could be a part of that, to help support my students even more. But I just really want to emphasize that I think it would be important for the district to take the temperature of our, of our staff and ask us how we're doing in a Google form or something because that connection with how we are impacted by this as staff members, I don't think it's been addressed. We are addressing how we are impacting our students, but we're not looking at how we are doing ourselves. And I don't mean that in a selfish way, but I just think it's important to recognize that we need to take care of ourselves too during this time. And I just thought that was important to bring to the attention of everybody that's listening to this right now. And I also just really thank you for considering the, the concerns with the equity, with the one-to-one meetings. I have concerns with that myself just because I am expected to treat all of my students equally and to advocate for all of them equally. And with over 350, that's really difficult, especially because I'm home alone over 40 hours a week with my two kids. But I just, I thank you for listening to me cry. I clearly needed to and just thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Chelsea. Thank you for your work. Mike?
I'm a new trustee. I've been on the board for two years and that's nothing for what it takes to serve in this capacity. I'm only speaking for myself. This is not to put shade on anybody, but the mistake that I make over and over in these meetings in moments like this is I start saying, well, maybe we should do this and maybe we should do that. But I have in front of me Board Policy 1521, Board Superintendent Relationship. It says, "The Board seeks the recommendations of the superintendent." It says, "The superintendent develops plans, programs, and procedures needed to implement the policies and direct the district's day-to-day operations." This conversation began with Superintendent Plato making the recommendation that is on the screen. It would be helpful to me to hear from our superintendent what his recommendation is at this moment.
My recommendation has not changed. I, and I'm not sure if it's necessary for me to restate everything that I've already stated.
That policy verbatim.
So, this is not a policy.
I mean, this is.
This is a recommendation that the board will take action to continue remote learning for the balance of this year.
Except, except maybe strike the one-on-one thing.
Yes, yes, we can certainly do that. So, it would read, "Determine if students should be invited for a check for academic or social, emotional."
Thank you, Mark. Is there any other public comment, Jason? So, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve continuing online remote learning as described in our previously submitted action plan for all students with the possibility, on a very limited and targeted basis, the ability of our building administrators to work collaboratively with staff and determine if the students should be invited for a check for academic and social-emotional support and/or social-emotional support, consistent with Governor Bullock's April 22nd, 2020 Directive implementing executive orders 2-2020 and 3-2020 and guidance for the phased reopening of Montana.
And that, you admitted it to leave out the 1.1?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The folks that are connecting to us remotely, in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have some policies.
We do. So, if you recall, at our last meeting, we adopted 2 and that's why 1900 is not listed and 1904 was the policy dealing with our ability to utilize transportation funds if needed. We talked about that at the last meeting. So, we actually already have 1900 and 1904. These are the rest of the series that, that I think we need to adopt. We did drop off a few. I presented all of them to you last week so that you could review them. And again, these are the policies that we think would be helpful. And just let me say that, again, these are not tying our hands, these are providing opportunity and options if we need them. So, again, I'm happy to jump into any of these. My purpose in presenting them to you last week was that you were able to look them through. So, keep in mind that we would, as we did last time, the first motion would need to be a suspension of Policy 1310 presented here. And again, I wanna clarify that this suspension of 1310 is for this meeting only, it does not continue past this meeting and it's allowing us to adopt those emergency policies if needed on a first reading. And typically, our 1310 policy states that we can only adopt a policy after the second reading. So, we went through that a little bit last meeting.
I'd entertain a motion to suspend Policy 1310.
So, move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those remote, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So, now we have 1901, 1903, 1905, 1906, 1906P, which stands for procedure, 1907, 1909, and 9 to 11 that we're recommending adoption. The board can take those one at a time or they can certainly make a motion for, for...
Mark, the only question I had and we talked about it earlier, on 1903.
Yeah, let me thank Lance for reminding me. So, 1903, Lance and I talked about this and right here in vulnerable individuals, and I'll try to enlarge that a little bit, 1903, lines 32 through 39, about midway, it says that, it describes the 65 or older with, with health conditions, systems that are compromised such as chemotherapy for cancer and other conditions requiring such therapy must not, and we're recommending the, the replacement of should-not instead of must-not. So, that was one slight revision that we would be recommending. So, it would, should not attend school meetings, gatherings, or events held in accordance with this policy. And, you know, how you would enforce that to begin with is, is a, is a challenge, but the way to get rid of me.
Mark?
Me too.
When I read the packet that came from NTSBA.
Yeah.
Many of the policies had options in them.
Yes.
And some had a table, choose from.
Yes.
We don't need to go into all of that, but you've, you've already done that and what's on the board is what you want.
Correct. We've, we've, so the, the email last week was explaining those and I, and I said, I'm recommending option one here. and I, and I said, I'm recommending option one here, I'm recommending option two. So Beth has already placed those options in the policy and has not included the other options that were, were available.
Thank you.
I had a question. This is through the end of June, is that what this is in place?
Yes, through June 30.
Through June 30?
Yep. So is there a limitation on, on all of these?
All community use of any buildings or anything through June 30?
Jack?
Go ahead, Jack. I was just going to say, and again, these are providing options. They're not necessarily tying our hands.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. As far as we must, keep in mind that when we adopted that, one, dealing with transportation funds, I said, I don't think we're going to have to dip into transportation funds, particularly with the stimulus money. But nevertheless, it just provides that option. There, excuse me.
Were you able to have a conversation with Deborah Silk about 1910?
Yeah, yes. She, she said that even if we adopted 1910, the MOAs would trump that, that policy. So again, 1910 dealt with leave. And I, from, after adopting the MOAs, I just felt that that would add further confusion. And again, we were able to speak to her and, and said, no, the MOAs really trump that, that policy, or that.
Further questions? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Sorry, I'm muting. This is Ursula. If we, if we feel at some point that we might want to adopt some of the other policies, like there are the ones dealing with grading and things like that, that's still a possibility, right?
Yes, certainly is.
If there was a need to adopt other policies? Okay.
And I'll, I'll say, since you brought that one up, the grading, we discussed that with the administrators. We have a, a revision in our grading policies at the high school that we're moving forward on. What that policy provided, though, was just sort of carte blanche permission of any student or parent on any class to decide that they want a pass fail. And we just didn't think that that was, was appropriate. And we already have provisions that we're, will be utilizing for pass fail.
Okay, so we'll hear more about that in the future.
Yep, we just didn't want that widespread of, okay, I want this class as pass fail and I want this class to stay as, as graded. So we are, we'll be sharing that grading policy with you at the May meeting.
All right, thank, thank you, Ursula.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I entertain a motion to approve these policies.
With the, with the change.
With the amendment.
Crossing must, should.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
You got a choice there. All right, further discussion? Any public opinion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, those remote, in favor of?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move to adopt the consent, David.
There is none.
It's still going.
I think this is the first time we have been there.
I know.
Yeah. Hey, is Betty still on the line? Or was she on the line?
She was.
I just wanted to note that Betty Albright, this will be her last full board meeting.
As well as April.
As well as April. So thank you both for your service and, uh.
Oh, thank you.
Not quite the way I'd like to see it go out, but.
So of one of the three candidates in the room, do you now understand a little of what you volunteered for? We're mighty glad that you want to serve your community in this way.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.